We've got six o'clock, so if everybody could turn on their video and chime in, we'll be getting started.
Oh, for God's sake. It's not going to let me in. Oh, for goodness.
Judith, could you just do a sound check? Let's make sure we can hear you. If you can hear me.
One, can you hear me?
Yes, that's good, thank you. Mr. Shada, could you say something?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, hear you fine. Let's see. And then if we can make contact with Julie, then I think we'll be in business.
I finally got in.
Okay, and we can hear you fine. So I think we've got everybody here. We can go ahead and get started. Six oh one. So with that, I would like to call this meeting, a regular meeting of the Manitou Springs City Council to order. It's May 4th, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Council members Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Shada.
Here.
Julie Wolf.
Here.
Steve Bremner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune.
Present.
And Mayor John Graham.
Present, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the approval of the agenda. I believe everyone's had a copy of the agenda to review, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as written.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Onto the consent calendar. We have four items on tonight's consent calendar. The first, approval of the April 20th, 2021 regular meeting minutes. The second, presentation of new public art for.
Mayor, are you missed public comment?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, my apologies, my apologies. And these are the same eyes that I was using today, and they seem to be fine. My apologies. So we have public comment on non-agenda items. So this would be the opportunity for anyone who would like to address council about a non-agenda item to do so. Let's see if we have anyone.
And anyone on the Zoom meeting who would like to speak, if you can use the raise hand tool so that we can identify that you'd like to speak at this time. Thank you.
Apparently not. Okay. It appears we have no one wishing to speak to an on-agenda item, so we can push on to the consent calendar. Item one, approval of the April 20, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Second, presentation of new public art for Art on the Avenue. Three, approval of construction contract for sidewalk ADA improvements on Canyon and Park Avenues. And four, presentation of warrants for January 2021. And I do have a note here that it's just the January, although on the agenda it said January through March, so I would mention that. Okay, do we have a motion to approve, to accept and approve the consent calendar?
I'll move we approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll second.
With that one change.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand, please. Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yeah. I did something. Okay. Next item, item G1, hearings. We have a public hearing for a major conditional use permit, 2101. Major conditional use permit for food vending at 722 and 724 Manitou Avenue. Brandy and Billy Chisholm, the applicants. And I believe we have Michelle from Planning to lead off the discussion. So Judy, if you could bring Michelle over. There she is, thank you.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Michelle.
Good to see you. So, thank you. Thank you. So this is to allow the food vending operation, both in the vacant lot downtown at 722 Manitou Avenue, and then indoor seating and use of the ground floor of the adjacent building that's owned by the same person at 724 Manitou Avenue for a commissary kitchen. So it's a little bit of a hybrid between indoors and outdoors. There have been a number of previous food vending and other conditional use operations approved on this lot. The current owner of the property had a previous food vending approval on 722 Manitou Avenue. However, because of some health issues and then COVID, it, the conditional use expired. And so these new operators are proposing to reestablish Rocky Mountain beignets, which are French doughnuts, to define that, at this location. The only real item of note during this process, we did discover that 724 Manitou and 726, which is the Christmas shop next door, had, have a shared sewer. Through working with both those property owners, that sewer is going to be separated, and that is one of the recommended, recommended conditions of approval. So staff is recommending approval per the Planning Commission recommendation with 14 conditions and the required five findings. Just so the council notes, most of those conditions were the same as the previous major conditional use on the property, some of which were also added by previous council at that time. So staff maintained those, and then there are at least one or two that are customized to this proposal, and there's one regarding that, that shared sewer separation. So if there are, that was recommended unanimously by Planning Commission. And if there are any questions or clarifications that I can make, I'm happy to do so.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Michelle at this point? Mr. Bremner?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I, thank you for making that exception for the separated sewer line. I read through that letter that the person in question had submitted, you know, complained about the situation they had before, so that's a good, good addition to the, to the permit. So thanks for that. That was, that was, was going to be my question, and it looks like you've answered it, so I'm satisfied. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mayor Pro Tem was next.
Thanks. Just, Michelle, is it, am I correct in understanding that we have no authority to require using recyclable, compostable, biodegradable materials? It's, I, I know that Condition 10 was highly recommending that, but do we have any authority in that regard?
We do not have anything in our code that mandates that. Certainly, if council wants to strengthen that, it is a conditional use, so you could strengthen that to require the use of those types of materials. The previous approval was a highly recommend, so I just stayed with that, but there's nothing that says that you can't, with this kind of action, require it.
Okay, the recyclable seems to be, be becoming a difficult term in that regard, and given this city's interest in environment, in the environment and sustainability, it would seem like a, even if we leave it at highly recommend, that we might say, you know, something like current sustainable practices. But I would defer to others in that regard who know more about it than I do.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolf, I believe you had your hand up also?
Well, I just wanted to commend the Planning Commission and the Planning Department for adding in the retaining wall requirement. What a great opportunity to do an improvement like that, so I just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments from council at this point? Okay, okay, again, Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Sorry. I also want to say what a great initiative this is overall. I think having a business in that area, and it just sounds like the new owners are really gung ho and are, I'm very optimistic about what they're going to do. So, good job all around, thanks.
Great, thank you. Well, let's go ahead and give the applicants an opportunity to speak if they care to do so. We have both Billy and Brandy Chisholm available. Would one of you like to address the, address the issue tonight?
Hi, I'm Brandy.
Brandy, can you turn your video on?
Let's see.
If you don't mind, it, it helps us to be able to see people. Okay, there, okay. All righty. Brandy, you have the floor?
I just wanted to thank you guys for listening to our proposal. And I appreciate all the comments, and yes, we are very gung ho. We're excited about starting a business in Manitou Springs as soon as possible, and we're looking forward to being here.
Right, thank you. Billy, did you have any comments you want to make, or?
Uh, no, my wife said it, said what I had to say, so yeah, we're glad to, to be able to start this business and get going for the summertime.
Great, thank you. All right, council, we, this is a public hearing, so we will be moving to the public hearing portion of the, of the meeting. If you have any quick questions for the Chisholms, this would be an acceptable time to do that. Apparently not, so let's go ahead. I will declare the public hearing open. We have anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this issue? If you are an attendee, please raise your hand using the raise hand tool in Zoom. It appears we don't have anyone wishing to speak to that. I will mention we have two members of the public here at, at City Hall, but they appear to be not wishing to speak to this, so. In that case, I will declare the public hearing closed and take it back to council for any discussion items. Anyone have any comments or discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Bremner?
I, I move that it be approved.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second. Oh, sorry.
Well, that's okay, so segmented by Mr. Shada. Very good. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Very good, thank you. That went quickly. Brandy, Billy, thank you very much. Good luck, get those doughnuts cooked. Thank you very much. Next item of business, H1, consideration of resolution number 0721, a resolution adopting an updated universal fee schedule. And I believe we have Becca for that. So Judy, if you could bring Beck Davis over, please. Good evening, Beck. Yeah, we can hear you fine, I think, so if you would like to go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, so as everybody should be aware, the city puts all its fees into this fee schedule. We pulled them all out of the municipal code, put them in the fee schedule, so it could just be approved by resolution whenever there's a change. And we always, as part of the budget process for the new year, one of the things we do is we go through fees, and so usually you're going to see it before you in November, December, with the suggestion changes for the new year. But in this case, we're presenting it because there is one change, and that would be because of the ordinance 621, which allowed the city to put fines out to a private collection agency to collect, and we're adding a collection fee of 20%, which will go under the Finance Department in the fee schedule, so that's on page seven, which will be used to pay the collection company. So we'll get practically all the fines that they collect, and then we pay them that 20% plus an extra 10% to make up the 30. But it's pretty straightforward, and you should all be familiar with it. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Does anyone have any questions for Becca? It appears we don't. We have discussed this previously, so I think we have a pretty good understanding of this.
Great. So it sounds like we've done our job, and City Council is educated on this.
That's always a noble thing, that's good, on both counts. Okay, great. Well, council, if there's no, no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move 0721, a resolution adopting the updated universal fee schedule.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have, we have segmented by Counselor Chandler? All right. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Great, thank you very much. Okay. Next item of business, item, oh yes, I'm sorry, Becca, thank you for your, your assistance. We appreciate it. Thanks. Next item, I1, the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week proclamation. We have a little proclamation that I will go ahead and read. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments, accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, John Graham, Mayor of the City of Manitou Springs, do recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Judy Morgan, and Deputy City Clerk, Amber Tumlin, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Adopted this fourth day of May, 2021, in the City of Manitou Springs, El Paso County, Colorado. Thank you very much. Great. And we will then push on to the next item, I2, fiber, it's a fiber optic update, and that will be presented by City Engineer, Dole Grebnik. So Judy, if you would bring him over, please. Dole, it appears we have you in as a panelist, but we can't see your video.
There we go.
There you are, Dole. Okay, thanks, and, Dole, you have the floor.
Sure, great. Hello, everyone. Here to kind of give you a brief update on the fiber optic project. And I just, I just want to clarify, there was a little bit of confusion coming up to this. This has absolutely nothing to do with cellular 5G. I know that Manitou has a very, has a very strong opposition to it, and this has nothing to do with it. This is basically running conduit and then potentially fiber optic to, to basically have super high-speed internet. This has, like I said, this has nothing to do with 5G cellular service. I'm not involved with any of that. This is specifically to fiber optic conduit, and then the goal is to have super high-speed Wi-Fi, internet to businesses, residents, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that going forward. Judy, thank you for sharing that. If you'll just pop to the next slide for me. So I kind of gave a brief intro already, but this has been kind of a work in progress, and the first step of this was really to identify, because when I came on board, John Merritt had told me that there was some existing conduit within the confines of Manitou Springs. And so one of our first steps was to truly identify that area. The other thing that happened in the last nine months was one of the Verizon contractors had an extra conduit that they were willing to give us. And that extra conduit is along Manitou Avenue from that area approximately in front of the LaFon Hotel, and that runs along Manitou Avenue, and it goes up El Monte, and it actually stops right in front of the high school. Years ago, when, when sections of Manitou were rebuilt in the business area, there, they put in conduit on that north side of the road through there. So there is approximately some empty conduit from the Manitou Town Clock, and then it goes somewhere near the Ruxton Roundabout. We're not exactly sure where it ends yet. And then the MAPS project is also going to be installing new conduit through its project limits as well. So, you know, we, we have some gaps. We have a gap from Ruxton to Park Avenue, and we have a gap from the Town Clock to El Monte. So in order to close that gap, we need to install additional conduit. They are called handholds, where you connect fiber to it. And then, you know, there's, there's many parts of this. It's, it's not just, you know, you have the conduit, then you have to hire someone to go, and they actually pull fiber optic cable through it. When John Merritt was here, CDOT had a big fiber optic project that ran along Highway 24, and Manitou actually has some of their own fiber that runs along Highway 24 as part of that project. And that fiber would need to be connected to what's called a Gigapop, which is in downtown Colorado Springs. And so the goal, I think, for Public Works and for this going forward, is to basically close those gaps, to close those gaps with conduit, to close those gaps pulling fiber, and then to have a super high-speed underground backbone through Manitou Springs. Because of recent stimulus money, PPACG had $1.4 million available to seven of the municipalities, and so it was agreed by PPACG. Mr. Mayor, thanks for your help with that. And it would be split seven ways, and so we're going to Manitou, we had to apply for it, and we received it, but we're going to receive $200,000 of no match required federal stimulus money. Almost always, federal grants require a match of some sort, because it was stimulus money, it doesn't require any match. So we essentially get to spend $200,000. It had to meet federal requirements. Fortunately, conduit and fiber optic do because of their relationship to transportation, safety, mobility, ITS, all the things. Just to kind of put it in perspective, because this is going through its federal dollars, and it is PPACG money, it has to go through CDOT as the local agency administrator, and in order to do that, we have to create a project, we have to get an IGA, and then that triggers the need for environmental right-of-way utility clearances, and so, and also CDOT will require a full SUU design, and when I say SUU, I mean subsurface utility engineering. And so all these things are going to take some time, but, but we are starting the process. I've already requested the IGA from CDOT, and we're trying to get that process started. If you're going to ask me when this is all going to happen, I don't have a great, I don't have a great timeline yet. CDOT did suggest that they are trying to, because this is really more of a utility project, that maybe they could streamline some of the approvals or clearances, but I'm not going to count on that just yet. Judy, next slide, please. Okay, so what does it mean if we have this super high-speed fiber optic backbone that runs through the community? And really what it means is that we would have any, anybody that wanted it, and I don't, there's a lot of things that we don't have answers to yet. The one thing that this project is, the goal of this project is to get the infrastructure installed. Once the infrastructure is installed, most communities that do that, then they go out and they hire an ISP, an internet service provider, and that service provider, and it, there's this, I mean, it would have to go through the full formal process with a, a scope of work, and then we review proposals, and we have to score them and interview them. I mean, it, it's, it would be quite a lengthy and extensive process, you know, but, but for example, there are companies local, you know, Google offers it, and basically they come in and they run the software, they do customer support, they are charged with connecting residences and businesses, they meter the, the routers to whatever speed that they've done, and they kind of handle, the, the city owns the infrastructure, but then they kind of manage it and oversee it. You know, we're thinking it would be similar to like how the trash service has a franchise agreement. So they would sign a franchise agreement with the City of Manitou, the selected ISP, and they would come in and operate and manage those things for us. And, and again, I am not super tech savvy, but I understand the infrastructure needs, so that's really our first, first goal. And then, you know, what does it mean to have super high-speed upload? And one of the, one of the things that we've, we've heard, and we, we visited with the high school, the high school right now is buying very high-speed internet from Comcast. And one of the things the school talked to us about is that several of the students have decent download speeds, but they have very, very slow upload speeds, and it makes it very difficult for them to shoot a video and upload the video to school, and of course the pandemic has highlighted this, as so many people have been working and learning from home. And so with, with fiber, you get, and I won't be able to say the word correctly, but you basically get the same download speed as upload speed, and much higher capability, and you know, the, the goal could be to run real high-speed internet to businesses, schools, buildings, residents, those kind of things. So that, so that is really all to come, but we can't get to any of that if we don't get the infrastructure installed and get that project, get that stuff in the ground. And that's really, that's really just kind of a synopsis and overview, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Dole. Counsel, do we have questions for, for Dole? Mr. Bremner?
Thank you, Dole. It's very encouraging. One question I have is, does that $200,000 have One question I have is, does that $200,000 have a time limit? Does it expire at any time? That's my first question.
Yeah, technically, it doesn't expire, and I can't remember if it's 2024 or 2025. But CDOT is, and the state are wanting us to be spending that money as soon as possible.
Okay, my second question, and you may not have the answer to this one, but assuming we get the fiber installed, and we get somebody, you know, through the bidding process to step up to the plate, Google or wherever, hope it's not Comcast, to manage this, would individuals, businesses, and residences have a subscription fee that they would pay to this entity? Or would it be handled by the city?
Yes, and that would be some stuff for the city to decide going forward, is what do we want from this? And I think at a minimum, there would be a fee. You know, this is a chicken-or-the-egg thing, because we kind of have to know how interested the community and the businesses are in this. And then we have to, you know, we need to do basically some public surveying on who would be interested in this, and what part of the city are you living in? And then we have to present that information in the ISP. And then the ISP provider needs to go through and kind of do their calculations on what they think it would cost for that connectivity, and then to manage it and host it. And then they divide that number out, and that's their proposed monthly rates. Now, obviously, the more people that do it, the price drops accordingly.
Counselor Wolf? Julie, you're muted. Julie, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you. Once the school's contract expires, then we would be able to offer these services to the school as well, and that might be part of the community that's considered in the pricing?
Absolutely.
Do you know when their contract expires?
I think we last talked with them four or five months ago, and I feel like they had two or three years left on their Comcast contract. So the timing could work out well, just depending upon how things go.
Interesting. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shaded, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I do. I think probably everybody has seen Comcast has been very busy pulling their own fiber optic backbone throughout the community. In fact, I think they just finished doing the conduit from up by former Councilwoman Susan's house underneath the Town Clock over back behind the common wheel. Do we have any idea what we're up against, given that Comcast has got 24 pairs of fiber? That's now pretty much, you know, I mean, they lit up, I believe, the neighborhood, the post office neighborhood about two weeks ago, where our internet is now fed by fiber optic, and then it goes into their regular cable system. But I was just curious as to whether we've had any clues, whether, what Comcast's agenda might be.
I'm afraid I don't know what their agenda is, but, you know, this certainly would be very strong competition, because I think that both of us and then Comcast would have the same goal in mind.
Right. The other thing I guess I'd like to comment on, as an example, going up my street, there are two fiber, there are two fiber optic lines that are on the poles on my street. One is running, I believe, the cell phone services that are up on Highway 24. And the other is, I believe, the Comcast piece. I believe the Baptist Church has a big fiber optic cable, and the Cliff House does as well. And I believe that's probably, other than the Comcast one, is all originating, I think, at CenturyLink. The reason why I ask this is that what I'm worried about is that with everybody else doing this, do we dilute this, or do we basically actually create some kind of very quick access to, and, engineer, Gravner's correct, you know, most people in Manitou can get pretty high-speed downloads, okay? It's the upstream, which is very limited on cable. And if you're doing any kind of video production or anything like that, it's really limiting. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, do we get in competition with all these folks? Or do we do something in a collaborative way that essentially, you know, brings, you know, service really quickly to our constituents, as opposed to us building some infrastructure that maybe two, three years down the road, we just don't have the wherewithal to kind of pull it all together, because somebody else has essentially kind of beat us with the backbone. I believe there's also, like up by Councilman Bremner, there's fiber optic that goes all the way up to the peak now, all the way up Ruxton as well. So I'm just wondering whether we ought to have a conversation with some of the other people, because, you know, I was talking, I've been talking to the Comcast folks, and they're basically only using, like, two fibers, okay, to go to all their new point of presence. So that means they've got, you know, 20 pieces of fiber that's dark in all these neighborhoods. And I'm just wondering what their products might be, and whether we ought to be kind of working together to bring stuff, as opposed to building our own infrastructure. I'm just asking kind of questions.
Yeah. So I think to your point, which is an excellent point, is yes, yes, to both of it. I think competition is good. I think there could be an opportunity for some partnership. I will tell you, though, six months ago, a fiber optic company approached the city in the Arts District. And their business model is, is they're a nonprofit, and they come in to small cities and basically build infrastructure, run fiber to the homes, and then charge a monthly rate based on, you know, whatever numbers they need to make. In those conversations, when we were talking to them about the fact that we already owned about half of, you know, half of enough conduit in the community, we were wanting to install our own, they all of a sudden did not seem nearly as interested, because the big, you know, the big obstacle to overcome in that is that in-the-ground infrastructure. Swinging arially, hooking up homes is not near this big of a deal as it is getting those trunk lines. And the fact that Manitou potentially, or actually does have their own fiber from the US-24 bypass intersection right there, all the way down to downtown Colorado Springs where it can connect into a Gigapop, just suggests that Manitou really could own, and, I mean, it would, I don't know how much cheaper it would be, but I got to believe it would be very, very competitively priced. But I still think there could be opportunities and conversations to be had, because to your point, it could happen a lot quicker with the right partners.
Thank you, Dole. Some good ideas there. Do we have other comments from counsel? Questions for Dole? Okay. Well, this was basically an informational presentation, so, Dole, thank you very much. I think it raised some good questions, and we've got a little time to work on this. So I can see maybe where this is something counsel will want to address, at least briefly in a work session, so we can begin to give some thought to what would be a sensible and efficient application for Manitou. So, great. Dole, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody has a question for Dole before we let him go? I guess not. Dole, he made us a lot smarter, so good. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll push on. Great. Next item, receiver-act on counsel correspondence. And I guess we had, probably most of counsel has had an opportunity to see. Counselor Chandler had sent an email out this afternoon regarding getting personnel files and being able to review those at home or off of City Hall premises. We could potentially have a long discussion, I think, on this, but it's, we're really, I think we're restricted here since this is counsel correspondence. We shouldn't spend too much time on or go into it too deeply, but we can chat a little bit about it, I think. Mr. Parker or Judy Morgan, if we go too long, please jump in and provide some guidance on that. So just briefly, Julie, I saw you had your hand up, so if you could, you have the floor?
Well, I was just going to say, I lost about four of your sentences when my computer blipped out on me, but that's okay. I have the gist of what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. I would also call counsel's attention to an email that Mr. Parker had sent to all of us on Sunday regarding access to personal files, personnel files, and internal investigations of city employees. And Mr. Parker, at the risk of making you sound like a broken record, I guess perhaps if you could just briefly emphasize those points for counsel tonight, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, the general rule is that city council has access to personnel information of direct reports to city council, appointed officials, if it's relevant to an employment issue, and their supervisory duties over those direct reports. But the city council, the city code, has basically delegated all other city personnel oversight to the city manager and department heads. And it's a pretty universal concept in local government, at least in Colorado, if not the rest of the US, that the governing body doesn't access personnel information of non-direct report employees. So it's generally outside the scope of city council's authority to get personnel information of other employees. And that creates some liability for them personally and for the city, if that's something that's done. So my general recommendation and general advice to my clients is that leave personnel issues to those employees that are in charge of staff. And if there's questions or concerns regarding oversight, it should be brought to the attention of the direct reports to city council. If there's questions about what's happening in a department or an issue, the conversation should be with the city administrator or another direct reporter who's in charge. So that's my general advice.
Good, thank you. Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. Jeff, this is a question for you. I think, and I don't know if this is a confusion or not, or if it's just, for my concern, I'm more interested in, I'm not interested in personnel files, but I would like to know, and tell me if this is out of bounds or unreasonable. I would like to know, though, if there are complaints filed against the city by our employees. I would like to be notified what kind of complaints. For example, if we have just a ton of workers' comp cases, maybe we want to look at safety issues. Or if we have a lot of racial discrimination allegations, maybe we need to look at that. And, so I think that's different from looking at someone's personnel file, but my interest is more being notified about that kind of thing. Would that be out of bounds to ask to be notified? Because our city report, usually the weekly report will say things like, there were four claims this week. But then we don't get to know what they are unless we send a special email. But, so, the other cities have policies, for example, that says, look, you know, we're happy, in the weekly report, we're happy to tell you what the claims were about. We don't need a whole paragraph, but was it about time card fraud allegation? Or was it about sexual abuse allegation? Or did someone's leg get chopped off? Like, I want to know that kind of thing. Is that reasonable for counsel to be aware of what kind of claims are being made by our employees?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. Yeah, I think that there's sort of a, it's a difficult question for me to just answer and say, yeah, no problem, because I think there are situations where the city has processes in place for, you know, investigating those types of issues, which don't typically involve city council involvement. And so I think that you should be aware of what's happening in your city, for sure, sort of the kinds of issues that are coming about. I guess the question is how much detail should be provided, whether that somehow could harm investigation, or whether it somehow provides personal information that city council shouldn't necessarily be accessing. It would depend upon the type of situation that you're in, but I do think it makes good sense. Like, we have, we've had six workers' comp claims, or four of them in Public Works Department, and, you know, we're looking into the reasons why this is happening, or, you know, that kind of thing. That's definitely something city council should be aware of in their oversight. But I think details about who's complaining about what, you know, on current investigations that are currently underway, you could be maybe made aware of the sort of the general nature of investigation, but sometimes they stop after one interview. So I think that you shouldn't be kept in the dark. I would be concerned if I were you about that, but I think there's a balance, and I'm not quite sure if I can give you the perfect answer without really thinking it through about where that line needs to be. Because I do see in some situations, not here, but in other clients too, where, you know, the more information that gets passed about in a small community, the, I guess, the more at-risk some of these sort of investigations can be, and medical information about employees, you know, that kind of thing. So I'm not giving you a perfect answer, I know. But I do think that there should be some information provided to you about, you know, what's happening in your departments, where there's concerns. But I think the details, depending upon the situation, probably need to be carefully analyzed before they're disclosed.
Oh, I think that's really actually a very helpful answer, because it sounds like if there were predetermined categories, we could just be informed about which category the investigation involves, and that's it. Wait for it to be done, or, you know, that's it. But just so that we know the category, so that if there are patterns of concern, that it's brought to our attention. So actually, that answer is really helpful, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. And I guess my feeling on this is that really we should trust staff to, as the city charter structures the operations of Manitou City Government, we should let staff manage the day-to-day issues, which includes, you know, personnel and so forth. And I think when they need to escalate something to counsel's level of awareness, I think they can figure out the appropriate way to do that. I would also, you know, remind counsel that we've just recently added a full-time HR person here, so we have, I think, not only the opportunity, but the, really, the direction that we want to change how we're handling a lot of our internal employee relationships, you know, try to build those for the, to have a more constructive and productive environment.
I have a question, John. Oh.
Okay, go ahead, and then I'll ask Kelly to make remarks. Okay, Julie?
I just have a follow-up question to help me understand the remarks you just made, Mayor. So is that, if I were to paraphrase, paraphrase, are you saying that you would object to our being notified which claims are about workers' comp versus which claims are about the civil rights violations? You would object to us being notified about that, because we should just trust staff? That if they want us to know, they'll tell us? Is that a reasonable paraphrase of what you just said, or did I misunderstand?
Well, no, I didn't mean to go into great detail on that, so I sort of, I guess I glossed over that. My sense is when something is, you know, urgent and problematic comes up, that the city staff would advise us of that, certainly. In terms of having, like, routine metrics or key performance indicators, if we had a system where that could be reported, I think I'd be okay with that. So I don't think that's a whole lot different from what you're asking for.
It's already reported in the weekly report. It's reported every week in Denise's weekly report. She just does- She just doesn't tell us what the categories are, she just tells us how many claims were filed this week. And then if there's an investigation, she doesn't tell us until, we don't find out until there's a cora request by the media.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think aggregate data on, it would be a good way to do it. I would ask staff to just come back with an appropriate report, and it doesn't have, it shouldn't be every week, because that's too revealing, but I don't know, I would look to our human resources person to come back with when an appropriate timeframe, to come back with the categorized aggregate report might be, with any concerns that human resources might want to report to us. But I don't, I certainly don't need, I know Julie has asked for a number of things, I certainly don't need that regularly, or, you know, every week. To me, once a year would probably be, once or twice a year, or if you see a disturbing trend, to let us know. And then my other comment is, is it's both the personnel information that we need to be concerned about, but it's also how we distribute confidential information. So at some point, I think we need to address that as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Kelly, you have the floor?
So, Nancy, in regards to the confidential information, I do want to let you know that I am currently working with our IT department, and we're looking for a solution so that we can send out confidential information that can't be copied or forwarded on to anyone else. So it is, there are systems out there, we just have to find the one that will work with what we currently have on our processes. In addition, I did want to address you, Ms. Wolf, about the workers' comp claims. I actually have been doing a review of the claims over the last five years, and I'm not prepared to give you all the data now, but I do agree that, you know, once or twice a year, I'd be happy to give you a report of where we're at with the loss runs. I do know that we're trending downward from nineteen, or, I'm sorry, 2018, we had a couple of very large claims that still hold on. And so if you know how work comp runs, they go back the last three to five years to provide your premiums, and those type of things go into your mod rating. And that are currently, I think that I'm looking at possibly changing the workers' comp carrier, if that's a possibility, just because the rates seem awfully high, but I need to consider also that we have high-risk police and fire. When you have those high-risk departments, your premiums are actually going to be a little higher than normal. But just so that hopefully I can alleviate some of your concern there, that is one of the primary focuses that I'm dealing with right now, is work comp claims, you know, risk and safety programs, and those type of things. And of course, I've only been here a month, so I am working on it, and it is a priority. So, I will have a report to you, I'm gonna say, in a couple of months, if you don't mind.
Could we also be, could we also get a report on the other claims too, Kelly? Like, if there are things other than workers' comp, such as, any other claims? Can we have that included in the statistics? I wouldn't imagine it would be that overwhelming. I hope we don't have that many.
Well, to be quite honest with you, outside of the recent events that we've just, you know, gotten over that hurdle, I really, I don't have anything else on my plate as far as any other claims, any employee claims against the city, against a supervisor, against anyone. I don't have any, you know, falsification of timesheets. I don't have anything like that on my plate at this time. So, and of course, I can give you a general reporting, you know, that there was fraud maybe committed in time reporting or what have you. Of course, we have to maintain confidentiality of employee names. But yeah, so I can certainly add that in biannually, like I do with the work comp. I don't have a problem with that at all. And of course, if there was an urgent situation and, you know, something really horrendous came up, we would definitely make the council aware of that immediately.
Well, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
That's great. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. There was also the matter of, Councilor Chandler had asked about being able to, you know, getting access to files that might be considered personnel files, and taking those home. Again, I don't want to belabor this tonight, it wasn't an agenda item, but if we could probably establish a little direction, at least temporarily. Personally, I would favor not letting personnel files outside of the, outside of the city's custody, so, I realize it's, it's tricky for people to come down to city hall or to some other city facility and review files, but I do think the confidentiality of individuals is important. I think there's a liability issue that we expose ourselves to. I don't think the risk is worth it. That's my take on it, and I think about an incident that we had earlier this year when the city was moving towards a situation litigation, and the opponent's attorney gained custody of some confidential information that had been disseminated to, we thought, just city council, but somehow the opposition got information. So I'm a little disturbed by the security breach, and for that reason, I would be certainly more restrictive and cautious than otherwise. Mayor Protem?
Could I make a suggestion that, while Kelly is working on a system, and I don't know how long that might take, to distribute confidential information, not personnel issues, but confidential information electronically, as she described, that in the meantime, perhaps people could come to her office? How long might that take, Kelly, to get that in place? Do you have any sense? How long might it take? Do you have any sense for how long it might take to get that confidential system in place for emails, or for confidential information?
I really don't. I'm sorry, Nancy. I did send it out to the tech department, and I've not received any word back. And I sent that out last week, and they did say that they were researching. I will send out another note, of course, to see where we're at with that, and what our options are.
So my suggestion was just that perhaps in the interim, folks could, in fact, come to your office to review some of the information that has been requested. But I don't know where, if Councilor Chandler or Councilor Wolf would be willing to do that or not.
I'm available, I can make an arrangement anytime anyone wants to. I can meet you here, I can meet you up at the public works, where the files are actually kept. I prefer to meet up there, just so that I'm not taking them out of that building as well, just to, that's another step of protection for us and security. But I'm willing, just, you know, shoot me an email, and we'll set up a time, and you're more than welcome to come in.
That seems like a decent compromise and a generous offer. Not sure who had their hand up first. Councilor Chandler, why don't you go, and then we'll follow with Denise?
Thank you. I just wanted to make it very clear to anybody listening in that I'm not interested in employee files, I'm not interested in random employee files. I made a specific request for a specific piece of information on a position that city council is intimately involved in, this position, and I am willing to, this is for a learning experience for myself with regards to how we conduct ourselves in the future, and so I will get with our human resources director, and I will work with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Denise?
Yeah, I just want to say, the claims that are on our weekly report are not workman's comps claims, those are liabilities claims. So, we have not reported the workman's comp, and now that we have Kelly on board, we can start looking at that and make sure that we do the reporting accordingly. So, just want to make sure that that's liabilities claims, not workman's comp claims.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, if, Julie, I see you have your hand up, go ahead and comment, please.
I just, it's a clarification request, so does that mean that we won't be notified about the liabilities claims? Or we will?
You will be. Kelly's pulling that data together right now for the last, since 2018, you said, because she is looking at some financial analysis as she's doing that, and so we can provide you all that information when she's pulled together the entire report.
So when you send out the weekly update email, and you tell us how many claims were filed that week, those are liability claims, is it a problem to say what category of liability claim we're talking about, like, no more than two or three words per claim? Is that asking too much?
I'll turn that over to Judy Morgan, she's the one that manages those.
So just to be clear, those are property claims? So, like, if we have sewer backups, things like that, those are property claims. The workers' comp claims go to HR. And so it's in the city clerk's part of the report, those are the property claims.
Can we see, can we know, can we have any information about those property claims in the weekly report? Other than how many?
We could, sure, we can give you a category. We wouldn't be able to provide the actual, like, that, but the categories, we certainly can.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, okay. Sounds like we're making a little progress here. Kelly, did you have a comment? Okay, sorry, I thought you-
No, Judy answered it, thank you.
Okay, great, okay, good. Well, if there's no objection, counsel, I'd like to move on with the council correspondence, so, who'd like to go next? Mr. Bremner?
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight, the cleanup crew did some monumental work on the bar trail. Recently, they hauled about eight contractor bags, they did a deep cleaning of the switchbacks on the bar trail, up to about a mile and a half, and they hauled eight large contractor bags of trash, that's just off of the trail itself. And then, a couple weeks ago, they cleaned out a couple of camps that were up there, they'd been abandoned for quite a long time, but they hauled out quite a few bags of trash from those camps. And also, I've been hiking the Black Canyon Open Space, where we hope to build a trail that's gonna connect over to where the quarry, the Snyder Quarry is now, where they're gonna hopefully make a, Colorado Springs is gonna make a trailhead for Waldo Canyon. So we hope to connect over from Manitou Springs using the Black Canyon Open Space. There's a nice old wagon road that goes right through the middle of that property, that would be ideal for making a trail. When I've gone up there, I've hiked it now three times, there's quite a bit of trash there, there's some abandoned camps, there was one camp that I found, somebody was actually in, and he got quite belligerent with me, and I told him, you know, he was on, he was trespassing on property, it's illegal for him to be camping there, and he got quite belligerent with me. In fact, he followed me for about two miles, he kept yelling at me. So, I haven't been back since, but he might be a problem. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Who'd like to go next? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Para met last night, and they approved a mini-grant for Flying Pig Farm for a community composting program, along with education. So that's an exciting program that's going to be starting very soon in Manitou. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else? Okay. Councilor Chandler, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank personally everyone that came out to plant trees, the five-foot spruce in the URA, and the two choke cherry trees on Canyon Avenue, Becky Elder, Mary Ellen Montgomery, Melody Doherty, our city administrator, and Mayor Protem were there, and a few other people, and I just wanted to say thank you again. If you get to see, can get to see those trees on Canyon Avenue, they'll be on either side of the new art install. So thank you again.
Great, thank you. Let's see, and then just a quick update, it looks like we're set for our goal session and retreat on Saturday, June the 5th. That'll be at the Garden of the Gods Trading Post, it will be an in-person meeting. Dan Stewart will be the moderator for that, so we, that's on the horizon, put that on your calendars, please. And then next week, for our May 11th meeting, we'll be starting at 5 o'clock, we have the first agenda item, we'll be interviewing the Ward 1 applicants, so we'll try to start a little bit early so that we can get that taken care of, and also take care of some other business. One other thing I found out about this this morning, it's International Firefighter Day, so I'd like to extend our appreciation to our local firefighters and first responders for their continuing commitment to the community. That's all I have. Thank you, and I believe, Julie, did I see your hand up? Julie, did you have a comment? You're muted.
That's okay, I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anyone have anything else from council? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and go to the city administrators' report. Mr. Chaney?
Yes, good evening. Three things. Skyler Becker, new park and rec director, started last Friday, and this will be his first full week, so he's out there learning and about Manitou and the parks, so it's exciting to have him. The post, there's been a postponement in putting some of the signs up, the posts, because of the weather, the wet weather this past weekend, but we're hopeful that we'll get it in this weekend. And then that tag on to Ms. Chandler, we're gonna get some boulders out by the canyon trees, we'll be getting with Mary Ellen to protect those trees, as directed by Denise, and so we're working on that. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Denise?
Yeah, I just have one quick thing. Currently, we have 270 surveys from our customer service survey, which is pretty amazing. Our goal is to get to 400 to 500. The last date to get those in is May 10th, at 11:59, so I would encourage everybody to take a moment to complete that survey, and then we'll be bringing that back to council after we get the data, do the analysis, and the recommendations.
Great, thank you, Denise. All right, well, it's, we've gotten through the agenda, our last item is adjournment, so if we have a motion to adjourn, we could-
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye, and raise your hand. Aye? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you all, have a pleasant evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.